Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Community and Sport Committee meeting for the eighteenth of November twenty twenty five. All committee members are in attendance. I'll start off with the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Do any committee members this morning have a declaration of interest to make? All right, that not being the case, I have no business outstanding. We'll move on to the confirmation of minutes. Are there any questions in relation to this? I seek a mover from the floor, moved by councillor Augustine, seconded by councillor Antonelli. Any discussion on those minutes this morning? There being no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Our first officer's report this morning is the community funding and support allocations. Status report one July to thirty September twenty twenty five. Are there any questions this morning on this report?
Yeah, I do, Chair.
Councillor Augustine has questions. Call on the relevant officer.
Good morning. Sarah Shea, Senior Community Funding Officer.
Oh, thank you. Through you, Chair. I just, I'm just trying to get an understanding on, see the pillar one where it's capacity building. I'm just trying to work out how, when we, when we, you know, give the funding, how, how are we ensuring that we're capacity building? What's the, you know, the mechanism to, you know, do they come, keep coming back for five thousand, ten thousand each year? What's the parameters? Are we sort of, do you know?
Yes, so it is sort of twofold. So we do have the capacity building in regards to if they're having difficulty with the form in their first instance, we can sit with them and explain the form, go through things with them. We also have the stronger communities workshops, so grant writing workshops to give them a bit of extra capacity. And if they do keep coming back, sorry, I sound very nervous, but I'm right. Then we do have our development officers, our community development officers and our sport and rec officers who can work with them and look at other ways they might like to seek funding. Or, you know, again, we've, we've started doing a workshop on creating sustainable funding. That's been quite popular. So it's, it's an ongoing evolution of support, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, I was just trying to, you know, just trying to work out how, you know, to try and help whatever organisation it is to make sure that they, yeah, they're becoming a little bit more self-sufficient with our funding. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, thank you, thank you.
And it's not always a bad thing that they do come back. Some of, some of these groups have, I guess, for example, projects, have got quite big projects that they do apply to us for funding as well as other external funders, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
Any further questions this morning? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll seek a mover for our one recommendation that the report be received and noted. Moved by councillor Doyle, seconded by deputy mayor Johnic. Any discussion this morning? Councillor Martin.
You were first.
You got to move your round.
I was first, but doesn't matter.
Apologies, you moved it, Marnie, if you wanted to speak first. I didn't see you raise your hand.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to say thank you to council officers for the enormous amount of work that goes into assessing these applications. And I'm sure I'm not alone. It's a fantastic part of our role when we see these applications coming through and being able to give the support to these community groups, sporting groups, that deliver so much for our communities. They do such important work. So it's a really important piece of work and grateful for the enormous work that has to go into assessing all these applications. So thank you.
Councillor Martin.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate actually what councillor Doyle said. She stole my thunder somewhat. However, councillor Madden and I, we go regularly to community groups and organisations. Three times a month, we go to Carlely, Marburg and also Pine Mountain. And each month councillor Madden points out the opportunities groups have to seek some council funding and it's very, very well received. And I think it's a great expenditure of council money. Really applaud the programme. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Any further discussion this morning? Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair. During these last three months, the first quarter of the financial year, council approved seventy-eight applications from sixty-one unique applicants, allocating more than two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to support a wide range of community events and projects. These included civic and ceremonial events such as the Remembrance Day services, community celebrations of spring and multiculturalism and multicultural events, equipment purchases to strengthen local organisations and initiatives promoting health, wellbeing and the arts. That reason it's known, you can see a full list of allocations on the Transparency Integrity Hub. And it's great to see our committee embracing also our stronger communities workshops. They are very well received and we usually get record attendance to those as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Augustine?
Thank you, Chair. I too, yeah, would like to add my, oh, just congratulations on reporting all of these and keeping them all in check. And just, it's, it's really good to see when you meet an organisation, find out what they need, you refer them to show them how they can, you know, get the funding. And then when they've executed and you've turned up to their event, you see their idea, you see a progress and then you see the end results. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive of the way this is all handled. So thank you to the team for always, and yeah, thank you to the team as well, because there's been a couple of entities that have gone, oh, I just don't know what I'm doing. And I'm going, oh, this is what you do. They're brilliant team and they'll get you on the right path. And one hundred percent of the time, they've always got them on the right path. So thank you, team.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Any further discussion this morning? Councillor Madden?
Yeah, again, I'd like my fellow councillors, I'd like to congratulate the team that deal with these applications. And, you know, it's, it is wonderful to attend events and point out funding for programmes. But when I look at this list, it's like our achievements in, in this last six months. You know, things like the Black Snake Creek Festival, even, even minor things like sliding doors at North Ipswich Bowls Club, a new lawnmower at Musketeers. I mean, and then we have things like the Rosewood Hack Pony and Hack Club or Hack and Pony Club, where they, they hosted the State Masters Pony and Hack Festival. So when I look through this, I'm looking at wonderful events we've had in that period. But I'm also looking at a few events that are yet to be, let, yet to happen, Chair, mainly to do with Christmas carnivals. And I see here things like the Marburg, the, in Marburg, we've got the carols coming up. So wonderful achievement by the staff. Councillor Martin and I love discussing grants when we have our, go to either our community catch-ups or our ten community meetings. And this is almost like a, a list of great achievements, not, not for council, not, not for people, but for our community over the last six months. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Madden.
I have to say something because now I'm the old one out. And I had eyes, I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else has said around the room and I feel the same way, but also to our, our staff in this section because they are actually so approachable and so genuine in their assistance. And so there's just a, you can see the culture there resonates with the community. Thank you.
Agreed. Councillor Antonelli?
And so the baton is passed. I remember attending a, a number of years ago, a, a community not-for-profit where the, the chairman of that group got up and he said, one comment he said, which has stuck with me for a long time, and that is that governments do good. You know, we're always quick to criticise governments at all levels for certain decisions and the like. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of things that they do that are for the common good. And I think this is one of those reports that highlights that quite significantly, the fact that we do provide money for our community, we support our community, and we allow them to do what they do best in the community. And that is build the capacity of our, our city at a community level. So I just want to, again, commend, it is very important what our staff do in this area. And Sarah is the person who is our go-to in many respects whenever we have questions relative to this. And she does a wonderful job in helping some of those community groups, particularly if they haven't quite got the application quite there. She offers that advice and assistance to them to ensure that what they do so well in our community is supported by us. So governments do good, and this is probably one of the greatest examples of that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli. Any further discussion this morning? There being no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Our next item is a report on the twenty twenty-five Ipswich Sports Forum. Are there any questions of the officers on this matter? Councillor Augustine?
Oh, who's coming up? Don.
Don Stewart, Managing Community Cultural Services.
Hello, through, through the chair. Thank you, Mr Stewart. I, I was just wanting to know with this forum, two, a couple of things. One, are we wanting to, I just heard through one of the, the entities that went, they were looking for more of a direction on how do they transition into a lease arrangement?
Sure.
So was this more of?
The, the purpose of the forum was, was, was not singular in, in one specific area. But I guess importantly, it was the first of what we hope to be many further forums where we do talk about the tenure arrangements for our clubs and associations. As you know, ninety-five percent are on permits. A number of them are seeking significantly what you would call more, more secure tenure through licences or leases. But that's a massive piece of work which we will be undertaking in the new year through an appointed consultant to help us review current and potentially advise proposed future arrangements.
Yeah.
We'll engage obviously with the clubs along the way.
Yeah. And I think it's important on two ways. One, you know, from our side of things, trying to lessen our burden, but also, also showing the clubs what the burden that is on us. And them taking over would be, would be great. I know a lot of clubs in Brisbane, the way they operate. And one, they, they get the flexibility of being able to be their master of their own destiny, you know, destiny. But then it comes with that financial burden as well. And then you, yeah, so it's, I think they need to, as you said, we're going to take them on a journey. But yeah, they need to understand the whole
Sure.
ramifications of both ways.
We, we don't want to set a club up for failure. So what, whatever we do needs to be a sustainable model for both council and for the clubs.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And just with this here, I don't know if I, yeah, I don't know if I missed it, but do we go back to the clubs and say what the?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll have some follow-up communications. In fact, we'll have one going out in the next couple of weeks. We'll be setting up a page on Shape Your Rip Switch where we'll be loading all of the, the forum was recorded for the entire day. So we'll be loading those particular sessions onto the Shape Your Rip Switch page so that clubs can access those and, and listen to some of the guest speakers if they choose. But we'll then start to use that page as our primary communication channel with regards to our, our tenure review that we'll be doing in the new year. And yeah, our club engagement approach and, and dates, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. You know, there's, just in the report, you know, there's a, you, I can see how we can also, when, you know, volunteer management is really, well, volunteer fatigue is quite high and us being able to play that, just an extra little bit of a part, you know, the role in potentially their, their participation, you know, advertising that in that, in that portal, maybe. I'm not, I'm just, I'm just a bit bawling. You know, you know, they're worried about participation, how do they recruit? You know, the go-to is just Facebook or word of mouth of, of, you know, and it's like, so is there a mechanism for council to play a role in that if we've got the avenue to the?
I think our community development strategy for the past five years has, has seen a successful rollout and execution of our, our various masterclasses and, and, you know, community development programmes that we've delivered. Quite obvious was the lack of participation of our sporting clubs in those sessions. And for whatever reason that may be, but we've identified their lack of presence and attendance. So one of those, you know, review columns will be, how do we engage those clubs to see the benefit that can be, can result by participation, by coming along and learning how to or refining their skills in that volunteerism, in that, you know, governance, in that marketing, in that, you know, alternative revenue generation space. So we've got a big job ahead of us for our sporting community and that's what we'll be looking at.
And, and correct me if I'm mistaken, have we got one point of contact or two, you know, when we ask clubs to have, you know, a point of contact? I'm just, what I'm trying to think of is when we, when we're needing this sort of stuff, normally the top end, the, the president and the secretary is our go-to. And if it's the president, you know, that, that, that communication down the line, there's a little bit of a lack there and that's potentially, you know, the engagement on just?
We, we seek to have the primary contact for the club and a secondary contact. And we do believe it's the club's responsibility to ensure that is distributed accordingly. So we communicate only with those that we have on our, our primary contact list.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Chair, through you, during the, and thank you for the cadence and the, the, the speakers and presenters that you had. I think it was very well pictured at the right tone. One of the things that you made a commit, what the council made a commitment to is a benchmarking study. Just wondering how that's going.
Yeah, we haven't commenced that yet. That is down to, to have that delivered by June thirty of next year. It's just a, a timing and, and completing priority issue at this moment.
Thank you, Mr Stewart. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions this morning? Thank you, Mr Stewart. Right, I'll seek a mover from the floor for the recommendation. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Augustine. Any discussion this morning? Councillor Augustine?
Sorry, I thought the ma, no, I think it's a, a great start for our sporting clubs to be able to put their ideas forward, feel like they've been heard. And then, as I said before, start this journey with our sports clubs to see where we evolve to. But I think it's a good start that there's this open dialogue between, on a bigger scale, that other clubs can actually see what other clubs are doing. And it's, they don't feel like they're in a, you know, silo by themselves. So I think it's a really good initiative to go forward with.
Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair. I think the, the twenty twenty-five Ipswich Sports Forum was a milestone, our city's commitment, you know, to our community, our sporting community. I want to thank you, Chair, and also the deputy chair of this committee, councillor Mazin, councillor Augustine and myself were all, were there all day for the six-hour sports forum as well. And I think the, the sporting groups really appreciated that. We heard about issues including facility access, volunteer burnout, rising costs, and we also heard about the aspirations for better accessibility across the long term and greater collaboration, especially with female participation in sport as well. And I think these insights were invaluable. They will guide our council's planning, investment and support strategies, ensuring that a hundred and sixty-six clubs, forty-one sports continue to thrive across the two hundred and eighty-seven playing spaces that we have across our vibrant city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion this morning? Just add my own thoughts. I wanted to thank the officers for their work in organising this. I know that many months went into that process. And I'm personally very excited that some of the work that's taking place, particularly the tenure model arrangements. The permit system is interesting and very administratively burdensome. So I'm really excited to see what clubs in Ipswich put their hands up to, to go down a, a different route and try to drive a bit more revenue out of their facilities. The way things are moving with financial sustainability for our council, that's the sort of relationship that can only be welcomed moving forward. Any further discussion this morning? That being the case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Item five today is a report of the Multicultural Advisory Committee meeting. Are there any questions in relation to this report this morning?
Item?
Ah, apologies. We're on to item four, the Ipswich Libraries Report Card, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions on this report? No questions, councillor Antonelli? All right. I'll seek a mover then. I assume you're happy to do that. Moved by councillor Antonelli, seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion on this report this morning?
Chair, I just wanted to say how important the, the Rosewood Library is with regard to Division Four. It's an absolute centre of activity and it's state of the art. And councillor Martin and I continually receive praise from residents with regard to the Rosewood Library. And I think ninety percent of that praise should be directed to the staff at the Rosewood Library. It's not just that it's got great facilities. Those facilities are of no use unless you have great staff directing patrons to the facilities that are available there. But we have a, we have a community catch-up there once a month. And whenever we're there, there's lots of people there during the day. And I understand that when school ends, there's lots of students that make use of the facilities down there. So just a big tick for the Rosewood Library as well as all of our other libraries and our staff members.
Thank you, councillor Madden. Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair. We've seen record visitation with over twenty-three thousand people visiting the Ipswich Children's Library during the September school holidays last year, a huge amount of people. The very busy Springfield Central Library welcomed more than two hundred and eighty-three thousand people. It's bursting at the seams, that particular library. And we saw that the children's library attracted more than thirty thousand visitors in a single month. Membership continues to grow strongly with Ipswich Central alone increasing by fifteen percent. So look, beyond the numbers and I guess all the positive feedback we're hea- hearing from our community, that our residents do value our libraries, they value what they represent, they value the services they provide, they value the fact that they're a vibrant cultural hub, they are places of learning and they are a free indoor community space accessible to everyone. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor?
Just quickly, wanted to highlight the fact that no one is left behind as well in relation to our library programme. So supporting those most vulnerable, we visited a hundred and thirty residents that could not access our libraries. And we also ran four hundred and eight outreach programmes, so overcoming transport barriers and reaching community members where they gather. So I think that's really important that, you know, the norm to go to your library is not always accessible to all residents. So just having that service as well. I know it's kind of unique, but I think it's really important.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion this morning? There being no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Item five today is the Multicultural Advisory Committee report for twenty-eighth October twenty twenty-five. Were there any questions in relation to this report? There being no questions, I'll seek a mover. Moved by councillor Augustine, seconded by councillor Antonelli. Any discussion? Councillor Augustine?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Sorry, I've got a pain in my elbow. Sorry, sorry. No, I don't know. Has anyone had tennis elbow? I'm so sorry, it's so sore. No, thank you, regain myself. Yeah, sorry, the Multicultural Advisory Committee, I want to thank everyone for, for approving this committee to carry on and have parity with all the other committees we have. This is the start of a, a, a new way of us going forward. And I just, I can see things that is already in train, like, so on the fourth of December, we'll have, we'll consult with some of our leaders at our multicultural network, leaders' network, where we'll bring in more leaders and we'll get their opinion on, or their input into our corporate plan. So there's like one of the initiatives going forward. So it's just the start of how we can transition into the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Any further discussion this morning? That being the case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Our next item is the, apologies, Sport and Recreation Advisory Committee report for sixth November twenty twenty-five. Any questions on this report for officers? That being the case, I'll move this item, seconded by councillor Martin. In starting the discussion, more than happy to let everyone know that we had a discussion about the proposed master plan for the North Ipswich Reserve area stemming from a motion moved by councillor Madden last year. We had a good discussion about the elected bodies, sort of hopes, dreams and aspirations for the space, moving beyond the Western Grandstand project, as in like what's next, what's the sort of ultimate plan. And just wanted to thank everyone for their feedback. It was a pretty good session. Mayor Harding?
Chair, yes, I attended as an observer. I think it was the, maybe it's the first one I've attended. I want to thank you. I think you chaired it really well. I think the content the council officers put up was really great. It was really good, meaty work in this space. So, so well done to that advisory committee for the work that you're doing there.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion this morning? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Item seven this morning is the Libraries and Customer Service Advisory Committee meeting for the sixth of November, the report stemming from that. Are there any questions for the officers on that report? There being no questions, I will move the matter. Is there a second, councillor Augustine? Apologies, similar to the last item. We had a discussion just around the success of the Springfield Library and what sort of options we have with Ripley in terms of land and timing. It was a pretty robust session. I think there's a few things to look at. And yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone for their contributions as a And yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone for their contributions. It was a free-flowing discussion and lots of good ideas were raised. Any further discussion councillor Augustine?
Oh, thank you Chair. Yeah, I concur with you. I think it, it was a very good session. Everyone had a, you know, it was information, ideas flowing, was a, it was, yeah, very good to, to make sure that, you know, we've got emerging areas and we need to know how we handle our libraries going forward. So yeah, it was a very good session, yeah.
Any other discussion? I personally just wanted to thank the libraries branch for their works with the committee. I think compared to 12 months ago, we're certainly a bit more up to speed than what we were. And that's because of your diligent work and some of the great conversations we've had. And look forward to continuing that in the new year. Any further discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. It is 11:59 AM. I'll seek direction from the floor about what you wanted to do.
12:30?
Sorry, general business?
Sure, you may raise some general business if you want.
Yeah, well, unfortunately I didn't read the reports last night and realised like a mission on my part that we didn't say anything with regard to sports awards.
Yep.
Am I allowed to say something?
I'll allow it.
Oh, thank you.
On this one occasion councillor Martin.
Well, thank you. Just like to give shout out to Ben and his team for organising a great night. And not sure if everybody is aware, but well, three standouts for me that won. So Di Shepherd was coach of the year. So Di has international accolades. She also won AIS Coach of the Year Juniors. Lomi, Shalom Saoso, she won the NRLW Rising Star Award. She's just turned 18. Won grand final with the Broncos, also won an award at the Queensland Reds. She was our senior sports star. And our junior sports star was no less than Gaud, who finishes at high school next, actually on Friday. Finishes on Friday for junior schooling. So it's just amazing the calibre of sports men and women we have here. And that's notwithstanding, we have some international athletes that were nominated. Jude Thomas, for example, was racing overseas and didn't quite get the gong. So just the calibre and plethora of talent we have in this city. So I just sort of be a bit remiss to not say something. But again, shout out to Ben Carley and the team for a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin, outstanding contribution. Would anyone else like to comment on the sports awards?
Yeah, just on that, as you said, with respect particularly to the junior awards, I think that Holly Jackson was also mentioned in there. And she's going over to the States soon, I believe, to compete internationally as well. So there, there was a lot of stiff competition in there. And if not for Gao Gao's achievements, there, obviously there was a lot of other talent in our junior ranks.
Agreed councillor Antonelli. I think there's a few future Olympians there for sure. Any further discussion on the sports awards? There's, there's, in the junior categories, there's a number of them that are likely to be Olympians. I'm sure you'd agree. Okay, any further general business? There being no further general business, I think the consensus was moving towards the next meeting starting at 12:30. Is that agreed by everyone? Does that require a motion? Right, Mayor Harding's moved that motion, seconded by councillor Augustine. I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? That's carried unanimously. I declare the meeting closed at two past 12.